Please let me call to order the Bristol, Tennessee City Council Meeting of September 6, 2022. Mary Lee, would you please call the roll?
Allen.
Here.
Powers.
Here.
Luttrell.
Here.
Turner.
Here.
Fire Robin.
Here.
I would like to welcome everyone and thank you for attending tonight's meeting. Your interest in city government is appreciated. There are a number of opportunities to speak on matters of city business this evening. A sheet explaining those opportunities has been made available to you when entering the meeting room. As we go forward with tonight's agenda, I will note each time when public comment is welcome. In addition, a sign-up sheet has been made provided as you enter city council chambers for those individuals desiring to address city council during the Appearance of Citizens section of our agenda. At this time, I would like to ask Pastor Mark Overton of Central Christian Church to lead us in our invocation. And following, following our invocation, Vice Mayor Turner will lead us in the pledge.
Let's pray. Father, we humbly come before you tonight and we just want to lift you up and praise you. As we begin, we thank you for being involved in our lives. We know, Father, that we're not as bad as we could be, but none of us is as good as we should be, so we humbly repent and ask your blessing. We especially ask your blessing tonight on this meeting, on those that serve on this council, on those that will be speaking and making presentations and presenting ideas and suggestions tonight. And we pray, Father, that all of it will be done in a spirit of unity, to continue to help make this city a good place to live and a great place for people to come and visit. And we pray that it will all be done in a way that it will bring glory and honor to you. In the strong name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Pledge and allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Sora, do you have any items to be added to the agenda this evening?
No, Mayor, the agenda is complete.
We have three proclamations on tonight's agenda. First, we have a joint proclamation designating the week of September the 18th through the 24th, 2022, as Child Passenger Safety Week, and September 20th as Buckle Up for Life Day in Bristol. I would like to ask Councilwoman Margaret Farrobin to read the proclamation. Mr. Samuel Jones, Child Passenger Safety Program Coordinator from Bristol Promise, and Assistant Fire Chief David McGlamory, and Anna Lester, Office Manager for Bristol, Virginia Fire Department, and Chief Matt Allison of the Bristol, Tennessee Police Department will be receiving this proclamation.
Whereas children are our future and it's the responsibility of parents and caregivers to keep America's children safe, and whereas car seats are required by law for children traveling in motor vehicles, and whereas research analyzed by Cincinnati Children's Hospital Medical Center shows that in U.S. only one in four car seats are properly installed, and whereas research shows that when installed and used correctly, child safety seats decrease the risk of fatal injury by 71% among infants, 54% among toddlers, and 45% among children ages four to eight, and whereas parents and guardians must make sure that children aged 13 and under always ride in the backseat, buckled up in properly installed child safety seats, and a rear-facing child seat should never be placed in the front seat of a motor vehicle equipped with a passenger airbag. And whereas Bristol, Tennessee and Virginia encourage parents and caregivers to implement best practices for traveling safely with children, and whereas the cities of Bristol, Tennessee and Virginia are committed to working closely with our partners and safety advocates such as Buckle Up for Life to make choices that will keep children alive and safe, whereas children riding in the right seat for their age and size can be accomplished by a car seat inspection that ensures the safety of a child while traveling. Therefore, be it resolved that the mayors of Bristol, Virginia and Tennessee do hereby proclaim the week of September 18 to 24 as Child Passenger Safety Week in Bristol, and the day of September 20th as Buckle Up for Life Day. We encourage all citizens to help reduce injuries and tragic loss of life by buckling up themselves and their children every trip, every time. Signed, Mail and Luttrell, Mayor Bristol, Tennessee, and Anthony Farnham, Mayor Bristol, Virginia.
Would anyone come up to receive that, please? If we mentioned, there they come. Yes.
Thank you for this proclamation, but I want to thank all the partners that are involved, Bristol Tennessee Fire Rescue, Bristol, Virginia Fire Department, Bristol, Tennessee Police Department, Nice Warner Children's Hospital, Safe Kids Northeast Tennessee Coalition, and Bristol's Promise for this proclamation. On August, no, on September 20th, we are having a car seat check at the YWCA of Northeast Tennessee, Southwest Virginia, from 2:00 to 5:00, so we hope that y'all bring your kiddos out there to have their car seats checked. Anyway, thank you.
Next, we have a proclamation designating September the 16th, 2022, as Viking Pride Day in Bristol. I would like to ask Councilwoman Lee Powers to read the proclamation, but before she reads, I'd like to get all this maroon and white to come up to the, come up to the podium here, all these folks that dress up. I know you've got Viking pride because you're wearing it all over you. Looks good.
And that's a good thing.
Absolutely. We're not going to make each one of you speak.
Thank you. Oh, how awesome.
Thank you.
Love it.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Might as well shake. Thank you very much.
That's awesome.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Having taught for several years in the Bristol, Tennessee City Schools and having had three children to graduate from the high school, I guess that's why you asked me to read this. Whereas the city of Bristol, Tennessee seeks to showcase and promote the traditions and school pride that surround our community, and whereas the city of Bristol, Tennessee recognizes that the wearing of school colors symbolizes the enduring bond among all those whose lives, minds, and personal achievements have been influenced by the quality and pride of their school, and whereas our youth, all of you, are our most precious resource and we must encourage them, all of you, to become strong, productive, and caring people, and whereas Bristol, Tennessee City Schools are rooted in a deep, rich history and tradition. Now therefore, the mayor of Bristol, Tennessee hereby proclaim September 16th, 2022, as Viking Pride Day, and ask that the citizens and businesses of the city of Bristol, Tennessee join in recognizing the importance of promoting community Viking pride by wearing maroon and white and/or the school logo on this day and every first Friday of each month. This day, the 6th of September, 2022, Mail and Luttrell Mayor. And Principal Kirk is here too. We'd like to recognize her and who is with you tonight.
Mrs. Keresols, one of our older teachers.
Oh, awesome. Well, if y'all will join us for our photo, that would be great.
Yeah, let's all squeeze us all in, Earl.
Sure.
And Mayor, you definitely hear it right here next to the proclamation.
Yeah.
So legendary.
Everybody squeeze it, bunches camp.
Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations. The bikes, five bikes.
Hi, I'm Macy Galloway, and I would like to thank you all for proclaiming Viking Day. I'm a part of a group called Biggest Fans at Tennessee High, and our goal as a group is to increase Viking pride throughout the entire school. I want everybody at Tennessee High School to feel that Viking pride.
Hello, everyone. I am Sky Myers. I am also a part of the group called Biggest Fans at Tennessee High School. So is Maddox Fritz, Logan Tudor, Macy Galloway, Marley Johns, and Lily Ware. They couldn't be with us today because they had an athletics sport to attend. We also have a bunch of our faculty members helping us out, too. Our goal in our group is to bring out the school spirit and to make it the best we can make it, to leave that footprint behind, that memory. There are several roles that make up the Biggest Fans Club. For example, student sections, leadership roles, having fun, and bring that school spirit. We are wanting to make everyone feel welcomed when they come to our school or even our athletic games. The Biggest Fans Club is a great opportunity for our school and our school spirit. One more thing, let's go Vikings.
Thank you to all of you here. I know y'all are having a great school year. Y'all have been very successful with many of your athletic endeavors, and we look forward to hearing more from the mighty Vikings.
Next, we have a proclamation designating the month of September 2022 as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in Bristol. I would like to ask Councilwoman Mark Hutton to read the proclamation. Ms. Melanie Myers Eisen, Prevention Coordinator of the Sullivan County Anti-Drug Coalition, is with us this evening to accept the proclamation. Ms. Eisen, if you could please come up.
Let me read this proclamation for us. Whereas suicide is one of the most disruptive and tragic events a family and a community can experience, with more than 1,100 lives lost in Tennessee each year and an estimated 25 attempted suicides for each suicide death, and whereas suicide is the ninth leading cause of all deaths in Tennessee, the second leading cause of death among youth ages of 10 to 14, as well as young adults ages 25 to 34, and the third leading cause for children ages 15 to 24, and whereas more than three lives a day are lost to suicide in Tennessee, which means we lose 21 Tennesseans each week and 97 people per month, and whereas Tennessee veterans, active-duty military, and National Guardsmen face a disproportionate risk as compared to the general population with more dying from suicide than combat, and whereas public awareness of this tragic problem is the key to preventing further suffering and loss of life, and the risk for human self-destruction can be reduced through awareness, education, and treatment, as the highest risk for suicide is among the survivors of those who died by suicide or those who have attempted suicide. And whereas suicide prevention has been declared a state priority by the governor and the Tennessee Legislature has declared teen suicide prevention as a state priority in partnership with the Tennessee Suicide Prevention Network, TSPN, to implement the Tennessee Strategy for Suicide Prevention, and whereas Tennessee is a national leader in the effort to prevent suicide, being one of the first states to develop a suicide prevention and evaluation plan covering the lifespan, and whereas the governor of Tennessee has appointed a Suicide Prevention Network Advisory Council to coordinate the implementation of the Tennessee Strategy for Suicide Prevention, whereas the TSPN is a grassroots collaboration of Tennesseans and organizations working to eliminate the stigma of suicide, educate the community about the warning signs of suicide, and ultimately reduce the rate of suicide in our state. And whereas every member of our community should understand that throughout life struggles, we all need an occasional reminder that we are all silently fighting our own battles, and whereas we encourage all Tennesseans to take the time to inquire as to the well-being of their family and friends, and to genuinely convey their appreciation for their existence by any gesture they deem appropriate. A simple phone call, message, handshake, or hug can go a long way towards helping someone realize that suicide is not the answer. Therefore, be it resolved that the mayor of Bristol, Tennessee hereby proclaim September 2022 as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, and urges all citizens to work to prevent suicide and to raise awareness and tolerance around all people affected by this tragedy.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I appreciate, on behalf of TSPN and the Sullivan County Anti-Drug Coalition, for bringing awareness to this important issue. We all can be the one to help our neighbors, our friends, our loved ones in time of crisis. I do want to remind everyone, we have a new crisis hotline, 988 is the number now. It came into official effect in July, so if anyone is struggling, you know someone's struggling, we, you know, encourage them to use that hotline to get some assistance and help. Suicide is a preventable death, and everybody has a role in that prevention, so thank you so much for it. Thank you. Next is with great enthusiasm that I would like to recognize our fire department for the recent re-accreditation by the Commission on Fire Accreditation International, the approval authority for the Center for Public Safety Excellence. At this time, I'd like to ask Chief Mike Carrier, Assistant Chief David McGlamory, Battalion Chief Alan Howard, and Lieutenants Matt Chase and Justin Mullins to come forward and address the public on the significance of this recognition. We'll let him say a few words, and we'll go up for the, uh, the war.
Well, first off, I want to start by saying thank you to the mayor, city council, and Mr. Sora, and thank you to all the men and women of the Bristol, Tennessee Fire Department. To go through the process of international accreditation through the Center for Public Excellency is no, it's no small feat, and we put a lot of time, a lot of effort into preparing all the documentation for that accreditation. And when you go through the accreditation process, you submit all of the documentation, and then they send a peer team in to evaluate everything, and they spent four or five days with us, four guys from fire departments we'd never seen or heard of before, and they went through everything from our equipment to our procedures to our policies, and talked with our finance department, with our city manager, and various other aspects of the city. And then, after we got through that phase of it, the next step was to go to Denver, Colorado on August the 16th and set before the accrediting commission. And we set before 11 people, and they fired questions at us, and we were able to answer those satisfactory for all that, and we were very pleased that at the end of that process, we had a unanimous vote for accreditation. Our department was first accredited in 2017. The accreditation period lasts for five years, so we have to go through the whole entire process again in 2022. And so we started on this sometime last year. We do an annual report, but we really kicked it into high gear about a year ago to try to get ready for where we needed to be, and our guys and gals put a lot of effort into doing that, and I don't want to take up all the time, so I want to allow some of our other people who played a very significant role in our accreditation to come up and say something, but I do want to say that it is an honor to be selected for accreditation. When you think about it worldwide, 301 departments is what are accredited worldwide, and out of those, eight of those are in the state of Tennessee, and so it is an elite group, and we're very proud to be a part of that group.
One thing for us to accomplish this task was teamwork, and that's not just this team. Like Chief Carrier stated, we met with Mary Lee, we met with finance, they met with Mr. Sora. Our whole team together put this on and made it happen. 12% of the municipalities in America are covered in the fire service by an accredited fire department. That's an astounding thing to do. Us being a part of that, police department being a part of that, puts this together as a whole and makes Bristol just a better place to be. So I'd like to just, the support we get from you guys, the support we get from all the different departments is what makes us able to do this, so thank you for giving us the opportunity for us to do what we love to do.
No one else can speak? Shame on.
So, Mr. Mayor, I know you were there in Denver with them. I was there in Charlotte for the first time, and just, it is an intense, intense process and takes lots of preparation to get to that point, but then going through the actual accreditation process onsite. It's, it's intense and thorough, and it's, says a whole lot for our fire department to have accreditation, also our police department, so we are proud of our public safety here in Bristol, so thank you.
If I may, just real quick, I mean, it was a true honor to sit up here on that table with all these professionals that represent the Bristol, Tennessee Fire Department. And to sum it up, you know, right in behind us, if I'm not mistaken, you had, the United States Marine Corps was coming in to try to get their accreditation as well. I can't remember if they were from Camp Lejeune or Camp Pendleton, but to see a full bird colonel come in there, I mean, you better be standing tall when he comes by you, so it was truly, truly an honor to sit there with these gentlemen. Okay, an additional item of recognition on tonight's agenda is a Tennessee Highway Traffic Safety Award received by our police department from the Tennessee Highway Safety Office. Our police department recently competed in the organization's 34th Annual Law Enforcement Challenge. This program provides an opportunity for law, excuse me, for local law enforcement agencies to demonstrate the traffic safety initiatives they promote in the communities they serve. The office recognized our police department by designating them as the second-place award winner in the category of agencies having 71 to 100 officers. Police Sergeant Jody Camper is here with us this evening and will tell us more about the importance of the department's traffic safety program.
Evening. My name is Sergeant Jody Camper with the Bristol, Tennessee Police Department, and I wanted to thank the city council for recognizing the police department tonight. Your support means a lot to us, and we appreciate your support more than you could ever know. Each year, the Tennessee Highway Safety Office has a Law Enforcement Challenge. It's an opportunity for law enforcement agencies across the state to show what they are doing in an effort to reduce traffic accidents, injuries, and fatalities. The Law Enforcement Challenge focuses on six areas. One, department policy and procedures, that's where I get to help mostly because I'm the accreditation manager, so they want to make sure our procedures and policies are up to snuff and that, that we're doing, that we have the right policies in place to make sure that we're doing what we're supposed to do as far as traffic safety is concerned. Two, public information and education, which is where our officers, when they go out and do community outreach, our SROs, our Community Relations Department, we all work hand-in-hand with that part of the process. with that part of the process. Our officer training, which is our Training Department, and our leadership, to make sure our officers are trained and equipped to go out and do what needs to be done to reduce crashes and to keep the streets safe. Officer recognition is a big part of our department. Our leadership wants to recognize our officers for doing the right things to keep the streets safe and reduce crashes, and seatbelt enforcement, DUI enforcement. Our enforcement stats, data collection, those are things that they look at. We have a very robust data collection process that we go over weekly, some of us daily, like me. And an overall effectiveness of the campaign. So, this is something that Chief Austin takes very seriously, and the rest of the department does as well. And I wanted to, again, thank you all for your support.
Okay, moving right along. We have no presentations on tonight's agenda, so we'll move on to the Board of Education Liaison Report. Dr. Tudor?
Good evening, everyone. I hate those students left. I wanted to thank them for being here, but most importantly, thank you all for recognizing Viking Pride Day. I think Viking Pride was their idea, so I would like to commend those students, that group of students, under Ms. Kirk's leadership, for coming up with that. They recognize what a value the community is to our school district, and by your proclamation this evening, you recognize what a value our school district is to our community. So, I appreciate that partnership, and I'm proud of them for being here this evening and coming up with that idea and presenting that to you. So thank you for that support. I'm also proud to announce that we have two reward schools again this year. We have Holston View Elementary School and Tennessee Online Public School, who both achieved reward school status. We are still digging into our data, and it's embargoed at the moment, but we had great success with achievement. We're still trying to overcome some hurdles with growth compared to students across the state. So we're still continuing to utilize our COVID dollars to overcome some of those hurdles, and we've got some learning loss that we need to focus on, which we are doing, but we're proud of our, certainly our, the successes that we've had so far. In a TESA update, just to keep you informed on the new funding model, the State Board of Education recently voted, gave a favorable, it was really more of a blessing, they don't really have the authority to adopt the rules yet until the legislator takes it back to the Government Operations Committee. So that's the next step in recognizing those rules and making them official. They probably won't be official until the first of the year in January, but as we continue to hear more information about the funding model, I'll continue to bring that information back to you so that you're informed and you understand that, all the ins and outs and details about how we'll be funded for next year. And then, the last thing I have for you is just to let you know that it is football season in Tennessee, but it's also music season. So Music in the Castle is actually October 1st. I won't see you again until that has already occurred, so I wanted to let you know that Music in the Castle is coming up, as well as football season. Our first home football game is not this Friday, but the following Friday. So you're welcome and invited to come to any of those events. Do you have any questions for me?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
And speaking of football, I'm curious about, are there any renovations or plans to renovate the visitor's side of the Stone Castle? Is there kind of a rumor that's circulating a little bit? I'm just curious.
Yes, so, we have designs, and the way that came about is because we actually have received an Office of Civil Rights complaint for ADA compliance. We don't have enough handicap seating. I'm sure you all are aware of that, if you've been in the castle. So, last year, last football season, we added some handicap seating areas on both sides, and that was Phase 1. We don't have enough, so we still have to add more. We also have to add handicap parking and accessibility into the castle. So there's a design plan to take some spaces out of the senior parking lot. We're actually going to probably have to bust through part of that wall to have a handicap ramp into the, essentially, we'll drop out onto the visitor's side. So yes, we have a preliminary design for Phase 2 of that OCR complaint, which will remedy, there are significant problems with that visitor's side. If you haven't seen it lately, it's failing, it's old and failing, as are the baseball seats that we have that are also concrete, and the track seats that are also concrete. So, we are in the preliminary stages of identifying what we need to do with that, and what OCR will approve for us to, and the timeline for that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
If I could ask, you know, I was contacted and with concern that all of the concrete would be taken out and aluminum seats put in. And have you gotten that far into it, or do you plan on holding community meetings as to what the community, you know, where they are in all this?
Well, the next step, first of all, is to take it to the Board. The Board has seen a preliminary design for aluminum. We have, we just had the structural engineer out a week ago to consider concrete. Concrete's probably going to be twice as expensive. We don't have the funding for that. So that'll be what the Board will consider, as to whether we will delay some other projects and go back with concrete, or do some variation. We don't know if, there's a particular section that's failing significantly. Parts of it are not nearly as bad, and can probably be resurfaced, but there's a section that probably has to come out completely. So, all of that, there's really three options. The aluminum option, tearing it all out and going back all in with concrete, or trying to fix what we can. And we don't have estimates for those yet. So that, at our next work session next week, actually, is what we're sharing with the Board.
And who has done the schematics on all of this?
It's Don Shell and his group, yeah.
And so...
And Burwell, and we have the same structural engineer that we had on TMS.
Right. And so I'm sure that whatever is done will be in compliant with the Historic Registry.
Yes, we've already actually reached out to the Historic Registry as well.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
I just had one more. When you were talking about as far as growth and challenges, are you referring to the TVAS scores that came out of where, I guess, we were a 1, and all of our surrounding counties were 5s? Is, what is going on? Is there anything the Council could do to help with that, or to correct?
Well, so our achievement's very good, and TVOS was not, particularly because of two schools. And there are lots of reasons, it's very complicated, but also, there are factors that have to do with TVOS as a comparison over time compared to the rest of the state. And so the rest of the state grew more than our students did. Our achievement is better for one year than the rest of the state. So that, achievement, growth, as well as attendance, grad rate, all of that takes, paints a full picture, so we can't just take isolated pieces of that. In terms of what Council can do, continue to support us and partner with us, absolutely. There are a couple of spots that we have already made some adjustments for. Some of it is, it is populations of students, some of it is teacher issues, so lots and lots of reasons for that. It's still embargoed, so I can't give a ton of information until we share that with the Board and the embargo's lifted, which is next week, I think. But I'd be happy to bring our data presentation, and maybe that's something I can share with you all next month, so that we can get into the difference between achievement and growth, and where we had some bright spots. And like I said, we still have two reward schools, TOPS is five years in a row reward school, so we still have great things going on. So I'd be happy to share that information with you, to give you more detail, and then certainly invite you to support us.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think that would be great, to bring to a work session so that we can be a part of that, because for us to advocate, we have to understand. And I've had people reach out to me and say, you know, "Do we fully understand what's involved there?" I said, "And we need a comprehensive understanding of that." And, and, so, and I feel confident that you would share that with us. You know, it's such an integral part, and I know you know this, of our economic development, you know, when we're inviting, inviting industry into our community. And sometimes, statistics can be misrepresented, and so we want to advocate as greatly as we can. And then, once, to circle back, once you have the information about the Stone Castle, because it is so iconic, if you could also share that with us as Council, and the different cost that it is across the board to retain its iconic and historical integrity.
Sure, be happy to.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm sorry, go ahead. Just one follow-up.
Never gotten this many questions.
On the test. Are there indicators that could be seen along the way, or did you just get hit with this information just recently? Throughout the school year, could you see things, milestones that were...
For the data, or for the...
For the data.
For the data.
As it was coming in?
No, I was shocked. Because our achievement scores were higher last year, every, across the board, as a district, across the board, every one of our achievement scores were higher than they were last year, which indicates we grew. So theoretically, you would think our growth scores would follow that. So, without getting too complicated, growth scores are on a scale of negative 2. Anything below a negative 2 is a 0, or is a 1. Anything from a negative 2, essentially, to a 0, it's really kind of on a bell curve. So if you think a 0 is a 3, negative is 2 and a 1, positive is 4 and a 5. You can have a negative 2 that equates the same as a negative 16, but this negative 16 averages in significantly. And so if we have a teacher who had negative 16, they're a 1, just the same as a negative 2, but the negative 16 really weighs that down. So we have a couple of spots where we had some teachers who, different circumstances. We had a high school teacher, for instance, who was on medical leave, and a different teacher had to fill in. Well, all of that factors in. Some circumstances with students and trauma, lots and lots of different circumstances. So, no, I was surprised, very shocked by that, because our achievement scores were very competitive with the school districts around us. So I was not expecting TVOS the way that it was. And it is, like I said, it is primarily two of our schools, it's not across the board, but because those two schools were significantly negative, it brings your district average down, which made us a level 1.
Does that have any impact on state funding?
No, does not. In fact, that's a great question. The new TESA model actually has no growth incentive whatsoever from a TVOS score. So our, getting a 4 or 5 in TVOS doesn't give us additional dollars. However, achievement scores do. So if we improve in achievement scores and improve the numbers of students who go from below proficient to a proficient, we get more TESA dollars for that. So I'm not minimizing the value of TVOS, there is a value for it, but it's not financially beneficial to us like achievement scores are. And again, we scored well in achievement. It's very complicated.
So, first thing I want to say is, I'm biased, I have a little bias, with Sheri, my wife, working. And I, I know that the teachers and folks at BTCS work incredibly hard, and I appreciate all that they're doing to pour into the kids in our community. I did want to ask you, and I hope this is appropriate, but I've been thinking and praying for Mr. Ray, our principal at Tennessee Middle School, and, you know, if there's any way to convey, I think, on behalf of the Council, our concerns for he and his family, and we're tossing prayers with them, if there's anything we can do to encourage them, I'd love to do that.
Thank you. He needs purse.
Yeah, absolutely.
And for the middle school staff, whenever you have leadership out like that, there's the emotional concern first and foremost, but there's a huge concern for those that are keeping it all in the middle of the road, so...
Well, they also lost a colleague about a year ago, to the same situation, so they're very traumatized.
Right.
Is that it? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Tudor. We have one public hearing on tonight's agenda. A public hearing is hereby open for Ordinance 22-13, amending the city's zoning map by designating property located at 400 Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard as B3 general business. Mr. Sora, would you please summarize this matter for the public?
Yes, Mayor, be glad to. As you indicated, Ordinance 22-13 does amend, proposes to amend on second reading the city's zoning map for property at 400 Martin Luther King Boulevard. This is, as you know, the location of the Bristol Family YMCA. YMCA is seeking, currently seeking rezoning from their existing zoning designation of R3 multifamily residential to that of B3 general business district. The basis for the YMCA's request is, as they expand their programs, they would like more flexibility in the future development of the property. In addition, as Council's aware, the R3 designation does not allow electronic message boards, which they believe to be an integral part of the marketing of their program, that would be allowed under the B3 district. This was considered by the Bristol Regional Planning Commission at their July 18th meeting, and was approved unanimously. With that, I'm going to ask Sherith Young, our Planning Director, to review with you the permitted uses in B3, and how they, how they, not conflict, but contrast with the R3 district. Sherith?
Thank you, Mr. Sora. Good evening, Mayor Letchell, City Council members. So I will share just a couple of slides, location map here. Everybody's very familiar with this hatched area, that is the location of the YMCA. You can see the surrounding zoning in the area, so there is some existing B3, there's some B1A, and then there's some R3 zoning in this area, which is the multifamily land use classification. Here are a couple of photos, and I know everyone knows this site well. But I will talk just a little bit about the contrast and the permitted uses for each district. The B3 zone is the general commercial district for the city, the R3 district is a multifamily zone. So in the B3 zone, you have your uses that are populating a commercial corridor, so commercial uses, retail uses, office uses, banks, office furniture manufacturing. So these are just a few of the items that appear in that B3 district list. In the R3 zone, you have single-family residential, two-family duplex dwellings, and then multifamily units. So there is a less intense use of uses in the R3 zone. The districts, as Mr. Sora stated in his introduction, do have some differences in terms of parking requirements, development requirements, and signage requirements, specifically the allowance of electronic message board in the B3 zone, which is what is at least prompted the initial request for this rezoning, but it does allow the, some more flexibility as they look at adding programs, buildings, different things in the future. This is an excerpt of our future land use map. So everything in red, and you can see the hatched area of the YMCA here, everything in red is designated for a commercial use in the future. So given the property's location in this urban area on this commercial corridor, frontage on an arterial roadway, the adjacent B3 zoning, staff felt comfortable recommending a commercial B3 rezoning to the Planning Commission. Public notification has been executed on this rezoning request, so signs on the property and notification to adjacent property owners by letter. We did receive a one-comment sheet back and one call from adjacent property owners supporting the rezoning request, and since presenting this to you at first reading, we've received no additional questions or comments. So, the Planning Commission did vote 8 to 0 during their meeting in July to send a favorable recommendation on this request for the following reasons: the location on the commercial corridor, frontage on an arterial roadway, the adjacent B3 commercial zoning, and then agreement with the future land use map. I'd be happy to answer any other questions, and I know Mr. Matthews is in the audience tonight, so I'm sure he can chime in as well if you all have questions for him. I'd be happy to answer any other questions, and I know, uh, Mr. Matthews is in the audience tonight, so I'm sure he can chime in as well if you all have questions for him.
Questions? Okay, would anyone in the audience like to address council on this matter? If so, please come to the podium and state your name and address before making your comments. Okay, seeing none, this public hearing is hereby closed. Next, we have appearance of citizens. This section provides an opportunity for the public to address city council on any matter that is not on the printed agenda for formal consideration. Comments are limited to matters of city business only. A response would not like to be made at this time since in most cases neither the city council nor the city manager will be prepared to effectively respond to the concern. The city manager will look into the matter, then report back to city council, or as appropriate, have staff meet with you in an effort to satisfy your concern. Comments are limited to three minutes per individual and are not transferable to other individuals. Groups are encouraged to select a spokesperson to represent them. I've been provided a list of individuals desiring to address council this evening. Okay, first on the list is, uh, Mr. George Link.
George Link, three zero seven Rutledge Street, Bristol, Tennessee. I just wanted to address the council to let you know what's going on with the group I've been working with, with Skate Bristol. If you're on, uh, social media, I doubt you escaped the Tony Hawk message that's been flying around for the last couple of weeks. Actually, we looked at a forty-eight hour news cycle reaction analysis. Basically, all the stuff that WCYB put on for forty-eight hours revolving around that. The average community engagement was eighty-nine reactions, and, uh, the Tony Hawk message was eight hundred and forty-three. Just to put into light that this, this is a very positive development in our community. The temporary park is getting used almost every day, as long as it's not raining. Everybody's grateful. As a organization, working with Heads Don't Bounce, we've given away twenty-three helmets in the last several months to youth thirteen and under to wear while at the park. We're also working to get gear for, uh, underprivileged youth. We're also getting ready to do a benefit concert here in November, working with the Cameo. We have had a number of local businesses that are wanting to work with us in, uh, fundraising. Maggie, we believe in Bristol, has been facilitating with us as a fiscal agent. We are very grateful for, uh, making sure that everything's above the board and, uh, we maintain a nonprofit status as we pursue our own five oh one C-three. Our current group size is four hundred and thirty-eight online. In our last official meeting, which happened a couple of weeks ago, we had fifty-one people in attendance, a mixture of parents and kids. And, um, so the, the community at large is excited. And, um, just wanted to kind of keep it out front, and if you have any questions, uh, feel free to reach out to us. I want to let, give you notice, though. A big reason I came up here is we're getting a young adult advocate to start leading the charge, and I'm going to, uh, work with them to help facilitate the discussion with you in the future. So expect an email from them. They'll be ages seventeen to twenty-four is what the Skate Park Foundation requires, but they will be working with their peers. So, um, we're going to have a more organized voice to the community instead of a bunch of teenagers and adults who act like teenagers running around on skateboards. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Suzanne White.
Hello, just want to make sure you can hear me. Since you guys have got me on a three-minute limit, I better read this and do it fast, so.
Would you please state your address?
I will. Suzanne White is my name. My address is two fourteen Edgewood Road, Bristol, Tennessee. My dad, Gail White, is here as well with me. His address is two twelve Edgewood Road. I will be addressing and representing both of our properties tonight through this. And I wanted to let you know that he is here and he will acknowledge that I am representing both. Our property adjoins East Cedar Street, which is where the East Cedar Street expansion started. Our property went from a ten-foot manageable bank to a thirty-foot unmanageable bank. It is awkward, ugly, and not easily managed. We had to buy a four-wheel-drive lawnmower to even consider mowing this disaster of a bank that was created on our properties against our real because of the words imminent domain. My dad could easily mow his own bank before, but he can no longer manage to mow this bank on his own because of the safety concerns. Have you seen it? Have you walked on it? You really should. I think you all need to take a leisurely walk on the new sidewalks and tell me how easily it would be for any of you to manage this monstrosity. The bank itself serves no purpose. It's a waste of land to you, to us, to maintain, and it's an eyesore to us and to anyone that drives on East Cedar Street, especially compared to how beautiful our property was before this expansion. I have pictures if you'd like to see them. I seriously wonder how the engineers that designed this stood back and said, yep, let's make that bank bigger. That'll make it look better and the water flow better. Here's your sign. I came in here a few years ago when I had a ten-foot manageable bank and asked to have a guardrail put up because of vehicles coming over the corner, around the corner on East Cedar and wrecking into our yards. I was concerned for the, our safety, mowing, and of course, the safety of our grandkids while they played in our field. I was told that this expansion would resolve this issue and we would not need a guardrail. The resolution kind of surprised me and my father as well. Now that we have a thirty-foot embankment for vehicles to come across, if you'd like to, if you think that little lip on the sidewalk will hold back a speeding vehicle, you're sorely mistaken. Speaking of resolution, how did this straighten out the curve prior to our property? Have you drove the road lately? You should. You should actually get on Beach Knoll and try to pull up and turn left or right onto East Cedar. It's a little bit off, so the engineers missed that by step. My main point and reason I'm here today about our property is multifold. This horrendous drain that is on my daddy's property does not control the amount of water on his property or the property of others when it rains. And I'm not talking about a torrential rain either. I'm really going to be concerned when that, that occurs. I have multiple videos and pictures. Some of you that are on Facebook have seen it. I can show you from last night's rain, from the rain, from the drain on, on my daddy's property. Please let me know how I can display those to the, to everybody so you can see them. Or feel free to go to my Facebook, Suzanne White, Bristol, Tennessee. I put up videos, I put up pictures. My profile is public, so anybody can see it.
Suzanne, your time's up.
Dang. Okay, well, I have more, so.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Next, we have Mr. Craig Charles.
How's everybody doing? Just want to introduce myself. My name is Craig Charles. I'm the owner of Cronkite Academy, um, Bristol. I took it over in twenty twenty when Ms. Ann passed. I currently have Cronkite Academy Johnson City as well. It's a cosmetology, barboring, aesthetics, and nail program. And I just want to introduce myself to you guys because I have my footprint in Johnson City and just talk about some of the things that I do with the community. For almost two decades, I've dedicated my life to perfecting the craft of barboring. I've earned the title of Master Barbering. I'm a barber ambassador for Confess Project. What the Confess Project is, it's also a mental health initiative, which ironically, um, the lady talked about earlier about suicide prevention. What we decided to do is use, um, barber shops as a form of bridging the gaps between the clients and the barbers to teach the barbers how to address their clients in mental health. Because we all understand that mental health is a serious problem. So we go through the state of Tennessee from Memphis to East Tennessee, just training barbers, just teaching them the importance of mental health and four cues, positive communication, active listening, validation, and reducing the stigma. What we realize also, it's one of the biggest problems for African-American men and young boys of color. They're the last to go to the hospitals and seek advice from doctors. So the mental health approach is the first mental health movement through barboring. But that's another point that I just want to introduce to you guys. But my main point is introducing myself and getting to know you guys in the community. Again, I have a footprint in Johnson City. My school has been opening Johnson City since two thousand and sixteen, and I just currently have it in Bristol. We are accredited program, which offers financial aid, um, Pell Grants, um, government assistance through the GI Bill, VRAP, and vocational rehab. And another thing I'm a proponent for is, um, normalizing trade schools, not making kids feel less than because they didn't go to a four-year school. I know a lot of parents make their kids feel a certain way. But I think it's important to give kids the opportunity to realize there are numerous amount of trades and CTE training out there where they can have a valuable living. For instance, my students, my first year of graduating, um, Cronkite Academy in Johnson City, their salary topped off at sixty thousand dollars, and last year topped off at eighty-five, and that's being a barber. So I want to normalize the training of CTE and cosmetology, aesthetics, and nails in our community to give kids an option. Because every kid is not built for a four-year school. I have a four-year degree myself. I came to East Tennessee State to play college football and have a degree in communications. But I understand it's not for everyone. But I just want to normalize and give people opportunity and give them a chance as far as our kids. But also, the next thing I want to talk about too is Med Week, which is Minority Enterprise Developmental Week. It's something started in nineteen eighty-four by Ronald Reagan. And the Chamber of Commerce of Bristol, Johnson City, and Kingsport chose the school in Bristol eight oh five Commonwealth Avenue to host it this year. It's September twenty-third, and I just want to invite all you guys to come and check it out. It's an opportunity to meet the minority businesses in the area and kind of give them a upper hand and just say, hey, we support you. Because I think for community growth, um, we all need to kind of push and help out and push the minorities in our community to help it grow as well. I didn't say black, I said minority, which includes Asian, Hispanics, blacks, whatever.
Mr. Charles, your, your three minutes is up.
Sorry, thank you.
What time is it on the twenty-third?
It's the, the twenty-third from six to eight. I invite you guys to come out and check it out.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I believe you were at the E-two E conference this last week, weren't you?
Yes, I was at the E-two E conference. Thank you.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else in attendance this evening that'd like to address council? Okay, next we have appointments to be made to three of our city's boards. First, we have one appointment to be made to the Community Development Advisory Committee. The appointment will fulfill an unexpected term of office ending April thirty, twenty twenty-five. The candidate is Ms. Catherine Stigers. Would anyone like to speak on behalf of the candidate? Please mark your ballots and we'll pass on Mr. Sora.
I can speak on behalf of Katie Stigers. She currently serves on our Board of Zoning Appeals. She also has been an applicant for Planning Commission. She's, uh, very involved in community and also her background, um, is very much in community and community development. So. She should be a good addition to that committee that does a great job.
Hutton votes for Catherine Stigers. Luttrell votes for Catherine Stigers. Turner votes for Catherine Stigers. Powers votes for Catherine Stigers. And Fire Robin votes for Catherine Stigers.
Next, we have two appointments to be made to the Industrial Development Board. The appointments will serve a six-year term ending August thirty-one, twenty twenty-eight. The candidates are Richard Armstrong, Jason Brewer, Dirk Crandall, and Raj. Someone help me, I'm Raj's last name.
V.
V.
Venka Taraman.
Okay, would anyone like to speak on behalf of the candidates?
I could speak on all of them. I know, I've known them all and, um, Mr. Brewer's on our Planning Commission. I think he's done a good job. And, uh, I've served with Raj on the IDB board, and those are the two I'll be supporting.
So I could, uh, ditto that as well. And Raj is a great representative for our, our manufacturing, um, and has served for some time and served well. And, um, could speak to others. Also, we always want to say that we appreciate the folks who, uh, put themselves forward to nominate, because it's not paid positions, and we appreciate what, um, people put in, the time, et cetera. So, and I too could speak to Jason Brewer. We sit next to each other at Planning Commission, and our Planning Commission, as y'all are aware, have a lot of pretty intense discussions, et cetera. And, um, Mr. Brewer's very engaged with those discussions and certainly does his homework and then some. So, thank you.
Okay. All right, uh, Fire Robin votes for Jason Brewer and Raj Venka Taraman, Raj V. Hutton votes for Jason Brewer and Dirk Crandall. Powers votes for Jason Brewer and Raj V. Luttrell votes for Jason Brewer and Raj V. And Turner votes for Jason Brewer and Raj V. So Jason Brewer receives five votes and Raj receives four votes, and they would be appointed to the IDB.
Next, we have one appointment to be made to the Parks and Recreation Commission. The appointment will serve a three-year term ending June thirty, twenty twenty-five. The candidate is Ms. April Norris. Would anyone like to speak on behalf of the candidate?
I would. April, when she first came to Bristol, worked for, uh, our family business and was an outstanding associate there. She's, um, a wonderful, uh, worker. She now works in Johnson City with their Parks and Recreation. She had worked with ours. I just can't say enough good, and I think that she'll, she'll bring great insight. I see Terry nodding his head back there because, uh, she's just a, a wonderful addition to our community and has been here, oh gosh, uh, over ten years now, I'm sure.
Okay, Hutton votes for April Norris. Turner votes for April Norris. Luttrell votes for April Norris. Powers votes for April Norris. And Fire Robin votes for April Norris.
We have one ordinance and two resolutions on tonight's agenda. The first item is a second reading of ordinance twenty-two dash thirteen, amending the city's zoning map by designating property located at four hundred Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard as B-three general business. Staff summarized this issue during the public hearing earlier this evening. Does any member of council have a question for staff?
I'll move to approve ordinance twenty-two thirteen with amending the zoning map.
I'll second.
Any member of council like to discuss ordinance twenty-one, or excuse me, twenty-two dash thirteen? The public had an opportunity to comment on this issue during the public hearing, so I believe we're ready for a vote. Mary Lee, please call the roll.
Hutton?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
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 Next, we have Resolution twenty-two dash one oh two, approving amendments to the city's Economic Development Incentive Program. Mr. Sora, would you please summarize this matter for the public?
Yes, uh, Mayor, be glad to. As council's aware, uh, we do have, uh, an economic development incentive policy that, uh, has been approved by city council. This guides the decisions of staff, that guides our discussions with various businesses, whether we're recruiting or whether we're, uh, encouraging expansion. It, it also guides our IDB in terms of incentives that they have available to them to offer, um, uh, for relocations or expansions. This document was last amended approximately two years ago. This, the staff brings you a recommendation for further, uh, amendments now that address, uh, the wording of pilots and, and, uh, the, uh, ability to offer either real or personal property, but not both. Also, uh, it, it refines the metrics, both in terms of property valuation as well as, uh, as income criteria. And this ties back to the types of incentives that a, a particular prospect or expansion would be eligible for. Tom Anderson's going to go into greater detail with this.
Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Sora. Good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor and Council.
It's, uh, Venka Taraman, just like it's spelled.
It's tough.
I've had seven years to do that, so. Anyway, I appreciate, uh, all the work you all do and all the efforts that you do to support, uh, my department. And this policy actually helps a great deal when we're in negotiations and we do have companies looking at us, even when we don't know they're looking at us. So, uh, some of the visions, uh, you know, it's been two years is, is, uh, two years, as the city managers explain. One of them is on page nine, when it describes services not to include call center support. And that's basically to help out the call centers and the contact centers that we already have here now. Agiro, they went remote, and there's, you know, close to 500 of them still living here in Bristol. They just went home. Then we have ACT that came in, and we have teleperformance. So not to saturate the market, they're going to come anyway. So throwing any more incentives at them is probably not required. And then, as Mr. Sora stated about the pilot benefits, the payment in lieu of tax benefits, changing it from real to or from real and personal properties and not both. We do have one project that has actually come to fruition, that has not gone in front of IDB, that came in under the former policy from 2020. I just wanted to make you all aware of that. And then on page, also on page 10, the 130% individual median income, changing that to 105% of the median household income. That bar was not high enough with the individual median. So by making it at the household, excuse me, the median household income, it raised the bar from $16.31 average pay to $21.23 average pay. We want wages up, and this is one way not to incent things that are basically mediocre. We don't need to do that. We need to get companies to try to excel and help our workforce and help our folks living here. And then the, on the metric sheets, the score sheets, those got changed from 130 of the individual to 105 of the median households. So the median household income right now was $42,067, and the individual median was $26,113. So like I said, we needed to raise the bar. Then there was a housekeeping part on page 11 about the properly noticed public hearing. IDB meetings are public, and we do provide notice, and those hearings are held in public. So that was superfluous and didn't necessarily need to be there. And then the updated number of parcels in our strategic development areas and the valuation. And then lastly, on page 14, was fixing the metric chart for the individual median income, changing it to the 105% of the household median income. So... And this is a very valuable tool for us. So appreciate again your support.
Does any member of council have questions for staff? Have a motion to second. Would any member of council like to discuss Resolution 22-102?
Good to keep up. Always important to review things and bring them up to date.
Yes, things change pretty, are changing pretty quickly, and I think it's good to have an eye on these incentives to be sure that we're incentivizing appropriately and not needlessly.
Thank you.
Okay. I believe we're ready for a vote. Mary Lee, please call the roll.
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Wake up down there, Morgan. You're still here.
I was starting to go off in a different direction.
Next, we have Resolution 22-103, awarding a bid for the construction of a new fire station serving east Bristol. Mr. Sora, would you please summarize this matter for the public?
As Mayor, as councils are aware, in 2021, general obligation bonds were sold by the city to fund three fire apparatus that include 100-foot ladder truck and two pumpers, as well as address a longstanding need for rehabbing or improving Fire Station 2. Also, the relocation of Fire Station 2, consistent with our resource allocation study that was done some time ago. In February of this year, bids were submitted, and the bid came in at just an astronomical amount and significantly higher, and recognizing that construction costs have increased. But we also felt like it would be important to go back to our bid specifications, perhaps do some things in-house with our public works crews, eliminate items out of the bid that could be constructed at a later date. We did this and put this back out for bid with those bids opening on August 23rd, and we reported the results of that bid opening to council during our work session. The little bid was submitted by Goins, Rash, and Kane of Kingsport, Tennessee. We proposed a contract sum of $3,992,000 to construct the project. The project does, is adequately funded with 1.9 million remaining from general obligation bond proceeds, and then a drawdown from general fund reserve for the balance of the cost. So if approved, our public works crew will go ahead and begin the site preparation. And we anticipate the project to be complete, substantially complete by midsummer of 2023. Dave Wilson, our Director of Operations, and Chief Carrier are both here to share with you concepts of the new structure and answer any questions you might have. David?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Luttrell, members of council. If we could answer any questions regarding what Mr. Sora just elaborated upon, we do have some slides for some basic information. The actual site, as you can see, is located, the entrance to the site is located just east of the current entrance to the Holston View Elementary School and is down grade, just off of King College Road, as you can see by the white area shown on the slide. These are some elevation views or perspectives provided by the Renaissance Group, the architects for the project. These are small and hard to see. We did do blowups on subsquams. This is a south perspective, which is what you would see from the elementary school itself. The north perspective, this is a viewpoint from the roadway of King College Road. And of course, the next two will just be from either side as you were driving to and from the site. Yeah, I think that's a duplicate of the... It's like, okay, thank you. Could I answer any questions?
I believe you're all set.
Can I answer any questions? As Mr. Sora said, the relocation of Fire Station 2 was identified in our resource allocation study that was done, started in 2012, was updated in 17, and it's updated again after that. And one of the reasons for the need to relocate that station obviously is the fact that of the age of the one that we have, and the fact that it has really outlived its lifespan as an emergency response fire station. Another issue that we have is with the annexations and how area's grown since 1972 when it was built. If you look at the travel time and the travel distance from that station to, say, Tar Hills and some of the areas that are in that zone, it's not in a central location. Obviously, with the new station, we'll be more centrally located in the zone that that fire station covers. This station will provide all the amenities that we need to bring it into compliance with what the fire service needs today. And when I talk about what they need today, we're talking about exercise room for firefighters for their physical health. We're talking about the cancer incentives and the negative pressure, positive pressure in various different places of the building. Turnout gear room that would be separate from the apparatus room, it would have a safe room in it for our personnel, as well as the way the front of this building is designed. It is designed to have a safe room for anybody in the community that needs to take refuge until they can get help from police, fire, or whatever they may need, and get into that lobby, which will be separated from the firefighter quarters to allow them to come in there, and there would be direct access with dispatch to get them what they needed. So there are a lot of things that are in this station that are not in our other stations, and even not in Station 5 as recent as it was built in 2017. It does provide for drive-through apparatus bays, which are a safety factor. You see that we have three doors on the front, two on the back. Two of those apparatuses, the fire engine and a reserved ladder truck that will be housed there would be drive-through. The half bay would be an ambulance bay. There will be an ambulance and fire engine responding out of that, and we will have a reserved ladder truck in that station as well. Do you have any questions other than that that I might answer for you?
I don't have any questions. I'm just really excited to see that go in that port of town where I slip right down the road. So I'm real excited about it. And I went to Haynesfield, and I remember as a kid, we would go over to that fire station. Those are great memories. I'm excited for the kids at Holston View to be able to do that, too. That's, I'm just, I'm really glad this is going up.
I think it's a good partnership with the school in that there's a lot of children there, there's a lot of activities going on there, and we have public safety people that are going to be right on the property at times when they're not on call. So I do think that there is an advantage to that location from that perspective, as well as being able to serve the community better from that location than where it is currently at.
Yeah. That's great.
I remember when I first came on council, this fire station that we're replacing with this new one, it was a real concern back then, 2013, 2014. And I want to thank Chief Carrier, and I want to thank Mr. Sora. You have really hung in there with this project, trying to determine that it would be built. The one that we currently have, while it's adequate, it is no more than adequate. And we have certainly outgrown it, and I think this is going to be just a great addition, and appreciate everyone that's participated in its coming to fruition. And I think it could be standing there this time, you know, next summer. It's exciting. Thank you to all.
I'd just like to add that, you know, being part of that group that went to Oklahoma, just hearing those other fire departments do their presentations and hearing what the panel committee, the type of questions they were asking, you know, keeping your firefighters and fire equipment and stations up to date and modernized. I mean, it's so important to be able to continue receiving these accreditations. And they're very important to our community. They're very important to people's insurance costs. So I think it's just a great day. It's a great day.
And with the design of this building and the way it looks, I think it will be an addition to the community. I think it will fit in well with this design, and I don't think that, you know, you always worry about driving up into the school and back out, is there going to be an eyesore sitting over here. But I think when you look at that building, it's something the community can be proud of, very proud of.
Motion to approve.
Oh, we hadn't approved it yet. Yeah, also, I'll just add the ditto for everything, and also just glad that we're finally here, because we did do a study of our fire stations, and it's been a while. And sometimes we have been doing some things and not doing things for our city ourselves. And another, another project is our Public Works Building. They were hoping we can also get to. But they're important for standards, but also for morale of our employees and to have the tools that they need to work with. So very exciting to see. And also, I want to thank the decisions between Mr. Sora and Finance Department and Chief Carrier, what to delay it last February. That wasn't easy, because we really need this. But we have found that that was a wise thing to do. So appreciate, appreciate that and the market or whatever that has worked with us. Thanks.
Okay. I guess we've had all the discussion on Resolution 22-103 that we need, so I believe we're ready to vote. Mary Lee, please call the roll.
Hutton?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Yes.
This brings us to the consent agenda. Mr. Sora, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
Yes, Mayor, we have the minutes for the August 2nd meeting. We have the minutes for the August 23rd called meeting. We have the minutes for the August 23rd work session. We have Resolution 22-104, establishing a corridor management advisory committee and requesting Sullivan County to appoint members to same. And Resolution 22-105, awarding bid for the purchase of a rescue truck for the fire department. Resolution 22-106, awarding a bid for the purchase of rescue tools for the fire department. Resolution 22-107, authorizing dismissal of a joint application for 2022 Federal Highway Safety Administration Streets and Roads for All Discretionary Grant Program. Resolution 22-108, awarding a bid for the purchase of bulk highway salt. Resolution 22-109, awarding a bid for the purchase of ballistic vests for the police department. Resolution 22-110, authorizing entry into an agreement with the Save On SBLC and RX benefits related to specialty drug copay assistance. Resolution 22-111, authorizing entry into Prescription Assistance Program Services. Resolution 22-112, authorizing payment to Troutman Pepper Hamilton LLP for legal fees. And Resolution 22-113, authorizing temporary use of public property and the public right-of-way for sale, distribution, and consumption of beer.
Okay. Would any member of council like any item to be removed from consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion second. Mary Lee, please call the roll.
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Next, we have city managers' report.
Yes, Mayor, September's a big month for Bristol. This coming weekend, the night through 11th, we have our annual Bristol Rhythm and Roots reunion. Is this the 22nd? Councilwoman Powers, is it 21st, 22nd annual reunion? This followed September 16th and 17th, our annual NASCAR Night Race at Bristol Motor Speedway. I'd also remind city council of the September 27th work session at 5:00 PM in the annex conference room. And again, I'd like to congratulate our fire department for their much-deserved reaccreditation. I know this is an effort. I was there in 2017, and it was not a unanimous vote. And this year, this past year was a much different experience, and I really appreciate the efforts that this team put together in getting it across the finish line. And I know Assistant Chief McGlamry said there was only, there were only 12% of departments across the country. We're one of eight in the state of Tennessee that's accredited, and that puts us in pretty elite company. Also, congratulations to the police department, Chief Austin, with the second place finish with the statewide highway safety office competition. I'd like to point out, we won that last year, and I think Chief Austin's position is they couldn't give it to us two years in a row. But once again, I thank you for the efforts of your staff in putting that together. And then lastly, I've spoken individually with each of you earlier this summer. And this month, I'll celebrate my 68th birthday, and it's time for my wife and I to begin to think about the next chapter and what that means for us together. With that in mind, it's time for city council to begin to explore their search or begin their search for a new city manager. I think the timing, I've given an awful lot of thought, as I talked with each of you, I've given an awful lot of thought to the timing of this. And we have an election coming up in early November, so that's an important milestone. As that, as a new council is seated in January, I think if you begin that process now, you will have a slate of candidates that you can begin to explore later, later this fall or in early winter, and be in a position to make some decisions. And also, the timing that would allow a new manager to be on staff in 2023 in order to be here for the budget process. I think it's important for a manager to be involved in that budget process that they're going to administer during the following year. So I think the timing is right for me personally, for my wife personally and family, and I think the timing is right for city council also. We've got an excellent staff. We're well-positioned to move strong into the future. So with that, I appreciate everything this city council's done, and certainly will be with you until such time as you find a replacement. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel? Comments?
Yeah, let's all go. Thank you, Bill, for everything you've done with the city and with staff and everyone else. Appreciate everything you've done. And I guess for me, I need to say happy anniversary to my wife. Tonight is her 25th wedding anniversary, so happy anniversary from here. So and recognize Mr. Slagel, Commissioner Slagel is in attendance with us, and also Dr. Browder. Thank you. And I guess we, the announcement went out today on the new CEO for BTS that was made last Thursday, I guess it was. new CEO for BTS that was made last Thursday, I guess it was. And I guess it was, went out today, so I don't know, Dr. Browder, if there's anything that you would like to say, or?
Mark?
Yeah, I, Bill, I want to say thank you. I, I first got to know you when I was, got onto the commission, and we worked well together, and I appreciated your insights, just, and it's been a real honor to work with you, and I'm grateful for that relationship, and, and I'm excited for the next chapters for you.
Thank you.
Glad to know you're still in the booth, wa, you know, making this replays, and I know what I'm yelling at. So I'm grateful for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I also want to welcome our Commissioner Slagel. Glad you're here and glad you're serving our community in Sullivan County, so thank you for that.
I'll go. I'd like to thank Dr. Browder for all of your years of service. When I first came on council, I met with Dr. Browder and received an education that I think has served me well for a little over nine years now, and provided me with great insight as to just how advantaged we are because of the services that BTS and TBA can provide to our community. And if I go anywhere else and try to get on a computer and work very quickly, I really appreciate it, because it's, the internet speed is not, not, not the same. Commissioner Slagel, congratulations, and we're glad that you're here, and wish you only the best. We'll be working very closely, I'm sure. And to Mr. Sora, it's just, you know, we sort of started in this particular role together, and I can't thank you enough for all of your guidance and counsel throughout the years.
Thank you, thank you.
So start with, with Mr. Sora, and I hope that we will have several opportunities to roast you or talk about, talk about your, your assets, et cetera. But just to be brief, wanted just to talk about the leadership that you have provided throughout your whole career, and especially as city manager, and your professionalism, your integrity, your public service, being a public servant, I think absolutely you're exemplary for servant leadership, and the heart for that, and demonstrates the best of, as also, I think, which also appreciated, you're pragmatic. So thank you for all those things and more, and we'll have opportunity to talk about you some more as we go forward, and we're going to appreciate your leadership with our search as well, so.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. And yes, welcome Commissioners Slagel also, and look forward to working with you and the commission continuing. And also, Jason Boer, thank you for the job that you do with our election commission, and, and things are not always easy, and what you've brought to that position and to the professionalism, et cetera. And I think that's probably what, yours is exemplary, but I think across our country, our election commissions work really hard and have staffs that work hard and volunteers that come in and work hard. And so we appreciate that, and especially during this season as we approach, approach an election. And I just wanted to add a few words George Lang left, but the Skate Bristol phenomenon just is such a great example of community and citizen engagement. It is youth and family engagement. It's public-private partnership. And with George and the other folks, it's leadership that's positive, that's inclusive. It's a great partnership with the city, and there's other leaders as well, but George stands out as a shining star, and we got to see his leadership with, along with others, with the, with the landfill pollution group as well. So just really appreciate everything that he's doing with leading that group, and I know Terry's pretty excited about everything. And also appreciate our response to them to set up a temporary park that wasn't necessarily in the beginning plan, and such a huge, huge success and helps with it. And for our schools, thank you, Dr. Tudor, and just wanted to also say that every year Bristol's Promise hosts in September kind of a state of the schools, and it's going to be on Thursday, September 22nd at 12:00 noon. This year, it's at Bristol, Virginia School Board, and we'll hear from both of our school systems and just appreciate the fact that she, that our schools do that, and usually have a fantastic presentation that tells us what's been going on, what's to come, and sometimes some of the challenges as well. So really appreciate that, and if anybody's interested, they can check in with me for RSVP at Margaret@BristolsPromise.org. And the other thing, just Car Seat Safety Week, want to thank everybody, our police department and fire together, and with the Safe Kids Coalition, had a car seat check recently. We have people who are certified officers in our fire department and in our police department. It is not an easy certification. Who knew that it takes 32 hours of classwork to get certified as a car seat safety tech? So really appreciate and appreciate valuing that in our community to make it accessible for folks. And if there's anybody out there listening, the, our fire departments frequently have somebody at their fire department that can do a car seat safety check if you go by. And I think it's maybe at Haynesfield and the Pinnacle are the ones that are most likely maybe to have it. I'm looking at McGlamry back there, so anyway, so really appreciate that. Also should say that Buckle Up for Life, through Bristol's Promise and the work of Samuel Jones, who's a volunteer, we have a $15,000 grant to buy car seats this year, which is the highest level grant that we've gotten so far. So making car seats available to folks, folks who need them. So, and the last, we've already mentioned about the Rhythm and Roots and Bristol Motor Speedway, and just wanted to thank all of our staff for how much work that takes to put those two events on, particularly now that they're back-to-back. And it's pretty tough stuff, doing manual labor, doing that, plus the planning behind the scenes, et cetera. So just want to appreciate everything that's done with those two activities and everything else that we do to offer a great place to live here in Bristol, so I think that's it. My three minutes are up, too.
Yeah.
I was going to say, you took next month, too.
I just want to share something really quick. You know, when we talk about this skate park, Rush and I were coming from downtown, and we saw this fella that had a skateboard, and he skateboarded. We, we came across him. He was then going up Vance Drive towards the skate park. It was almost dark, and we were headed back out from our home, and there he was going home riding a skateboard. These folks, whether they're young or they're older, they are coming from all over the city of Bristol. And they're all ages, and I think that it's a sector of our community that is just delighted. And so a big shout out to council for making sure that we still have a skate park, and to Parks and Rec for being, from providing a place for the skate park as we determine the new skate park, so thank you.
Okay, y'all know I've never been long-winded, so, but I'll just take a couple of minutes here. First of all, you know, thank Dr. Tudor for being here tonight. And although I was not a student of the Bristol, Tennessee school system, but I do have two fine young sons, young men they are now, that went through that school system. I have a charming, loving wife that worked through the school system. And, but, you know, Viking pride, it's in my blood as well. And we call it Bristol, Tennessee High for a reason. And we're here to support you in any way we can, and look forward to our ensuing meetings to talk about many, many things to come. Want to thank Commissioner Slagel for being here as well, and also want to thank Jason for stepping forward, serve on the IDB board. I know he'll do a great job. He keeps us in check pretty much at the planning commission. Serve with him on the Parks and Rec. He done a great job, and so look forward to continued working relationship. Dr. Browder, Mr. Sora, I can't think of two people that if we had to go to war, I'd rather have my foxhole with than you two gentlemen. I mean, the leadership that both of you have brought to this city is just unsurpassed. And I know you, you poured your hearts, your souls into this city, and the teams that both of you have built is just phenomenal. So, you know, we're, we're not saying goodbye. We're just saying so long for right now. So, but more work to be done. With that, adjourned.